Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the City Council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or send a recommendation to the City Council. I'm Laurie Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Matthew Rogers, and Scott Gingel. We therefore have a forum. Also present from City staff are Melissa Klotz and Dennis Marino. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff on the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you limit your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak out of a microphone so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all of the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. First order of business is going to be review of the minutes from our previous meeting of June 4th. Are there any comments? Seeing none as their motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes from our meeting on June 4th, 2013, as written.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made, and seconding it, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I want to note for the record that Member Burns was not present at that meeting, and so these minutes are approved and carried over. And on to our next item, which was the continuance of 1108 Grant Street. However, we did not begin that case, so we will start by having Melissa read it into the record.
Neil McCarthy and Lindsay Dold, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to demolish an existing front porch and construct a larger roofed front porch. The applicants request a front yard setback of 22.5 feet where 24.3 feet is required, and a side yard setback of 2.2 feet where 4.5 feet is required for porches, yard obstructions. Zoning Code Section 6419B1, and impervious surface coverage of 47% where a maximum 45% is allowed. Zoning Code Section 68210A. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted April 26th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated November 27th, 2012, site plan, elevations, image of existing porch, mock-up image of proposed porch, aerial map, zoning map of property, image of property, and spark meeting minutes of June 5th, 2013. I'd also like to note that the request for an impervious surface coverage of 47% is actually incorrect, and the requested impervious surface coverage is 45.4%, where 45% is allowed. That was a staff error.
Okay, and is the applicant here? At this point, if I could swear in anyone who thinks they might speak to us at all on this item, do you swear for him to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And again, if you could state your name and address before you begin.
Yeah, I'm Neil McCarthy. This is my wife, Lindsay Dold. Thank you for having this hearing. Appreciate it.
Maybe you could walk us through the proposal.
Yeah, currently, we have a, basically, a landing in steps, and we'd like to remove that and replace it with a full-length porch extending all the way across the facade of the house, and extending the landing out a further approximately two feet. The gutters would remain the same in terms of where they would empty out, straight out from the house, not onto either side, to either property on either side of us. We also brought two additional documents with us, two letters. One letter was drafted by us and signed by several of our neighbors, especially the ones across the street who would have a drag look at the porch, and they support us, and our neighbors to each side of us as well.
Okay.
Support, yeah.
Enter these letters as... The letter from 1102 Grant Street is applicants A. And that petition is applicants B. Okay, go on.
Everything else is there. I think I have all the floor plans, what it will look like. It's also, it's a roofed porch, but it's not enclosed, so it'll be open. There won't be screens, doors, so plenty of light and air will get through. And we really love to have a porch. We'd love to get to know our neighbors more. We actually have a neighbor here who's present, supporting us.
May I ask a question?
Sure, please.
So you know that the side yard setback is the issue at hand, one of the issues at hand?
Right.
So can you explain to me what your hardship is for not meeting, not being able to meet that side yard setback?
I guess it's, with the type of house we have, it's a Dutch colonial, so just, we did this mock-up that she's referring to, and it just seems to be sort of architecturally consistent with the house. If we were to pull it in a little bit, it might look a little awkward. Our neighbor who is on that side, where that major variance applies, is in full support. His name is on there, so... That's the idea. We'd like to have more space.
So, just so that I understand, the hardship is primarily architectural design?
And the desire to have more space, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what we're really talking about seems to be about three feet?
Yeah, that's about right.
And if you were to cut it back three feet, can you, can the, does the deck clear the windows on the front of the house?
That's a good question. I haven't thought of that. I'm not sure. I don't know how to answer that.
So, in looking at your picture, if we assume that your front door is about three feet, it seems that there is easily three, three and a half feet on either side of the window, so just from my understanding, it seems to say there's...
Would that make the porch narrower than the top? Because that would be weird.
It probably would make the porch narrower than the top. However, you could just do a larger overhang. But again, we're not designing. I'm just going to speak for Beth, who's not here.
Don't let me make weird faces on TV. Okay, so are there any other questions for Mr. McCarthy at the moment? Okay. And was there anyone else who wished to speak with us regarding this? Sir?
Hi, I'm Chris Thomas. I live at 1120 Grant Street, four doors west of the applicant, and I'm a practicing architect. I've been a practicing architect in Evanston since 1984, and have lived on Grant Street since 1998. I fully support what they're out to do. Front yard setback, they're merely asking for two feet. Side yard setback, I completely agree with them from an architectural standpoint. It's a completely symmetrical Dutch colonial. What happens on the left ought to happen exactly on the right. It ought to be as broad as possible, and from the standpoint of the usage of a front porch, and if you ever walk down our street, you'll see it's a street of front porches where people in the afternoon sit outside and have a drink and watch people and talk to people walking down the street. You need a porch of a certain depth and a certain width for people to, you know, comfortably occupy it. And I think the more that we have on our street, the better off we are. In fact, I don't know if any of you all are aware, but our neighborhood up there, what direction am I facing? Our neighborhood up there recently has been going through a bit of a crime spree with people during the middle of the day walking through front doors, testing them, and just walking in. And the more kinds of things like front porches, the more eyes on the street that we have, the safer neighborhoods that we have. Architecturally speaking as an architect, I think this will be a fine addition to our neighborhood, so again, I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The only thing, I was just running some quick calcs on the, now that we're so close on impervious, we're like basically right there with like hardly anything. I mean, it's seven square, if I did that right, it's like eight square feet that we're off on meeting that, so we're pretty close to making that...
Get closer if you meet the side yard setback.
I think I'm a little bit less bothered by the side in this specific scenario, although I'd rather see us lose that extra variance and hit a 23-foot front. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us from the public?
Can I add one other comment?
Sure.
Twelve years ago, I added a front porch onto my house. I liked the idea so much, I did it myself. The, I faced the same hurdle that they're facing now, which is the average setback of houses on either side. I remember when Martin Travis pointed it out to me. I was not particularly thrilled, and it cut two feet of depth off mine, even though I met the setback. And I think that my earlier comment about the nature of dimensions and the usage of the space are very interlinked and important things. I think trying to diminish the depth of something just to satisfy a setback will make the potential of the constant use of the porch less likely. And I want to see them sitting out there all the time. In fact, I demand they sit out there all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from you guys, Scott or Matt?
I just have one quick question, and because the plot of survey doesn't have, the house that sits on the west side, how close is that to the property line? Anyone?
Just about three feet.
I can bring it up to you, show it to you. I have the plot of survey.
Well, the plot of survey that I have doesn't have what's on the west. It has the house to the east, but not the one to the west.
North is up.
I'm looking for this property here.
Can I approach you real quick?
Yeah.
Thanks. What is that?
That's your...
That's your dimension.
Dimension.
From the side of your property to the property line.
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, for the house that sits on this side...
How close is...
How close does it sit, how close does it sit to your house?
Yeah.
And then I can do math to sort of figure out approximately where it sits.
That's okay.
See, this is weird angle distortion.
I'd just point out that the neighbor to the west did sign the document stating they're in favor of the variance, regardless of what the...
Right.
...setback is on that side. They're in favor of the project.
This picture can give you an idea. Do you want to have, you might have it in the file.
We do have that picture.
We do have that one.
Got to be at least six, side to side. Not six feet off the property line, but six feet, house to house, but...
It's just that they're at four. Three and some change.
Right.
Three and three-quarter.
Doesn't look like that's only four feet, though. Does it really matter? What?
Matter.
Did you have anything else, Mr. McCarthy? Last, any last...
We'd love a point.
With that, then, we will close the record and begin our deliberations.
You guys know my standard thing, right? Which is, porches should never go over the side yard setbacks or the front yard setbacks. I don't, for me, I don't see a particular hardship where it needs to go over. I don't consider architectural design a hardship. I think that there is a reasonable way to design it such that it can look nice and still meet the needs of having a porch. I encourage porches. I love people sitting on porches. What I don't like is the opportunity they provide for people to enclose them at a future date. And because that happens with some frequency here in Evanston, that's where my major concern comes from, is that we are approving these front yard, these porches with the possibility that at some date they're going to get filled in, and then we've created a bigger problem. So, just for the record, that's my thoughts on it again.
I don't know that it would be appropriate, but last week, we saw a case where we saw a variation that had been granted by the zoning administrator where it was conditioned that, there were, a condition was put on the variation with regard to a change in the future use. So I would think that we could condition a variant, a granting of a variance on a open porch, open-roofed porch, that it could not be closed in as a condition to granting the variation. That said, I also, I don't, I'm not sure that the hardship was well-articulated. I do think the architectural design of the house does sort of dictate a design, as the neighbor architect testified, but I also think the shape of the property is a little bit strange and prohibitive to outdoor use. It's a little bit pie-shaped, and if there's a way to grant a variation that encourages additional outdoor use and eyes on the street, to me, that's, in my opinion, that's enough of a hardship to justify a variation.
What are you thinking, Matt?
I mean, I tend to agree with Scott on most things, and one of the things that I always look at is, how do the houses sit on the properties as opposed to, if everybody were centered on their property, it would be nice if we could get the zoning department to work on that. And so that's one of the reasons that I always ask the question about the house on the other side, because all the houses tend to shift one way. I tend to be a little more lenient on a side yard setback to that side.
It's a good point. And actually, the aerial view, which is in the back end, sort of shows how the houses are...
It's kind of distorted, though, so it's hard to tell.
No, that's true. I mean, you can't see the property lines, but you can sort of get a sense for how the houses are spaced.
Right.
I think that given the location, given the location, existing architectural kind of aspects of the house that obviously aren't going to change, like the upstairs, that makes me okay with the side, but I would like to see, I would like to see the, I would like to see the impervious surface, given that we're eight square feet off, and that's less than six, that's taking six inches off the front, I would like to see that variance go away.
Is that calculation based on the .4%? Or is that based on the initial...
Based on the .4. Like, we're only .4 over, which, if I calculated right, is only eight square feet. So, that's, you know, when we go to minimum and we're eight square feet over on a seven-foot deep porch, then I feel like I can make that...
What's the standard size for the depth of a porch? Five?
Five's the minimum.
Five's the minimum.
Anything under five becomes tough to use.
Just one point to note, the impervious surface variance that is requested relates to the size of the property. It is a substantially substandard lot. It's almost 3,000 square feet less than the required lot size. If it were the required lot size, then the impervious surface would be nowhere near the 45% maximum.
How do you guys feel about the impervious surface?
It actually bothers me the least of the three, for the reasons Melissa just stated. It's awfully close to the 45 percent, and the lot is a pie shape.
On the impervious surface issue, you kind of have to think of it as a cumulative effect of the neighborhood, though. So you're not picking up that square footage to offset that anywhere else, because everybody else is going to build to their maximum. So the net is, it doesn't matter what it would do on, what it would be on a regular lot, you have to look at it, what it is for that lot. And if everybody in the neighborhood is going over impervious surface, we have basement flooding issues and drainage issues throughout Evanston. And so these sorts of things start to have cumulative effect. One person doesn't create a problem. It's when an entire neighborhood, everybody's over by a little, now the neighborhood's over by a lot. And then there's flooding and havoc.
All right. I think this is going to be kind of messy. So I'm thinking that we take this item by item, variance by variance.
Sure.
And run through it.
Before we do that, are there a set of circumstances under which you would approve the variance? Because maybe we should engage in a conversation with the applicant, if that's the case.
It's hard for me, because I know if there were, you guys know that my inclination is to vote no, but I do know that if there were other board members here, they would vote yes for it. So there's part of me that doesn't want to necessarily just mess with the applicant and make them come back in two weeks, just to have somebody else vote yes. So...
And they don't necessarily have to come back.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't, you need to vote with your conscience, obviously.
Yeah. Just don't hold me to it. Don't ever say, "Well, you voted once for that porch." So, yeah. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to it. I don't know.
Okay. Then maybe you're right, Lori. Maybe we should go just piece by piece and...
Do we end up, just really quickly, I think that we both, I think that all of us sort of reflected the standards, basically, in our discussion. I think, you know, for me, minimum change necessary on the impervious surface comes into play, but aside from that...
Hang on a second. I just thought of a compromise, right? Because if you, if we change the width, so that it lines up with the roof up above, that would most likely net them their eight square feet, will get me closer to a side yard setback that's reasonable, gets them an architectural look that is really close and probably still makes everybody happy.
So that it's as wide as the, I don't, so it's as wide as...
To exceed the dormer.
The dormer?
Yeah.
So it looks like it would come in about a foot on each side?
Then we can all, we can get them to move on tonight. Just throwing it out there.
I'm okay with that, but...
I can be okay with that.
I know we technically closed the record, but just to, I'm going to, for your benefit, I'm going to explain to you really quick. Technically, we have seven members, and there are four of us here. So you have every right to have a vote, a full vote from us on exactly what you've presented to us. However, it sounds, I don't know if you understood what was just said, but it sounds like you could walk out of here tonight with a full approval, based on that discussion of a porch as wide as your dormer. So I'm going to toss it out to you for a second here, and ask if you would like us to vote on each of your variance items. Vote it up, and we can, and it'll come back. You won't have to say anything next time, it'll just come back next time for the other members to get a chance to vote, based on what they look at.
So the other part of that is, it looks like if you stuck with the proposal you've got, that most likely, from the tea leaves, it would probably be a two-to-two vote at best tonight to approve that, and then you'd be rolling the dice with the other three board members, how they'd vote. You need a vote of four board members to pass it.
Do you have any questions? I know that's complicated and a lot to take in in one moment, but...
Look who's becoming the architect. I know. You just can't help yourself.
She's being a little shy, but she just wanted me to point out something about the walkway from the plot of survey. Even though it's within our property line, we discovered that our neighbors have been using it for years, like a gangway, which is a lot of our property. And we've even thought of doing something with that, making that grass instead of concrete walkway, because we're having a little one on the way, so that would reduce the percentage of the impervious, as the overall ratio of the property. But she's pointing out that because they already use it, it's like a, it's not even, it is our property, but it's like a common-use space, has evolved into that. And then I guess my second question is then, what would the dimensions therefore be, exactly? Because as it stands now, it'd be seven feet deep, 26 wide.
Right now, you have seven feet deep and 26 wide. We are guesstimating that, we are guesstimating that your dormer is approximately a foot less wide than your house, and therefore, it would be 20, approximately 24 feet wide.
Oh, okay.
You're going to lose probably maximum about three feet. And that's kind of...
On the overall length, not from each side. On the overall length.
That's an easy compromise, I think, yeah.
Okay. So what will happen is, we would condition that based upon, since we are guesstimating and we don't know, and this needs to be specific, it will, we would actually have a condition with respect to the dormer width, the existing dormer width, and then therefore, that would be measured or whatever, and you would go off of that.
So your contractor just needs to get up there, measure the length, and that's how, that's where he sets the columns down at the lower level.
Yeah, that would be your column width.
Yeah, that's the column width. So outside column to outside column should match the dormer.
And the porch might, the roof might overhang, similar to like the roof overhangs at the dormer. The roof kind of goes off to the side a little bit, so that same scenario could happen.
I think I understand. Chris, do you?
It works.
Okay.
Walk down, have some coffee.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay.
Remember, I have to look at it. They're inside, I'm outside.
Okay. I think we've come to a compromise that will get everybody out of here. So, does that bring us to a motion, then?
I think you should still go through the standards, as modified.
I guess to clarify then, as part of that condition, then, we also are eliminating that impervious surface coverage from our, from our approval. So, and we can deal with that technically when we get to motion. Standard number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. We have, we have letters and testimony from adjoining neighbors that having this sort of site on the street and engagement with neighbors is certainly something that would improve the neighborhood, and that the look would be consistent with the property and adjacent properties. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We've certainly been through some discussion as, with respect to how close that is, but it's certainly the intent of the zoning ordinance to promote front porches and the interaction that they cause in the neighborhood, as well as to sort of maintain the character and flavor of the historic homes that are in these areas. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. We've had various discussion about the sighting of the existing house, the peculiar shape of the existing property, along with the locations of the houses that are adjacent, and the formula that that creates with respect to setback. And all of these scenarios compile to create the peculiar hardship related to this specific property. Standard number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. And in this case, if we were to follow each of these regulations, then it would be difficult to create a porch that was both architecturally pleasing and consistent with the neighborhood, as well as a usable space, and therefore worthwhile to put into place. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. The owners intend to remain in the property and are really looking to have a space that they can use and enjoy, more so than improve for resale. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The items that we discussed previously related to the house, the sighting, the property shape, et cetera, are all longstanding circumstances, not created by the current property owners. Standard number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. And we've had some discussion on that and have come to a compromise which eliminates the impervious surface, which we were close on, and therefore, as well as reducing the width of the porch with respect to its encroachment upon the side yard, and therefore have come to the minimum change necessary to allow for this usable space to be created. And with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion in the matter ZBA 13ZMJV-0044, with regard to the application for 1108 Grant Street, that we grant the variances requested with respect to front yard and side yard setbacks, under the understanding that with the modified proposal that's been agreed to, and that we should condition the development of the property on, that the impervious surface variation is no longer required, and that the property be developed in accordance with the modified proposal discussed on the record.
Would you like to put that modified proposal into text in your amendment?
Which is to say that the width of the porch shall be no greater than the width of the existing dormer that sits on top of the house and faces the street.
I second.
The motion has been made, and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck with your porch. Okay, moving on to our next item of business, we have a new item of 2533, 2532 Oakton Street. And I believe we are ready for Melissa to read it in.
J&amp;S LLC property owner applies for a special use permit for a yard waste transfer facility at 2533 and 2532 Oakton Street. 2533 and 2532 Oakton Street are located in the I-3 General Industrial District, which requires a special use permit for yard waste transfer facilities to operate, zoning code section 61443. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: special use application submitted June 18th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated July 12th, 2012, site plan and photos, aerial view of property, zoning map, spark meeting minutes of June 5th, 2013, and planning and development committee meeting minutes of April 22nd and May 13th, 2013.
Before we begin, if I could swear in anybody who thinks they will speak to us regarding this matter this evening, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. And is there somebody that's going to represent the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Al Maiden. I'm director of community development for Rolf Campbell &amp; Associates, a division of Manhard Consulting. My address is 910 Woodlands Parkway, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 60061. I have over 40 years' experience working on these types of matters. 70% of my clients are public agencies, such as yourself, and 30% are private clients, where I help them through the zoning process. We've been working with city staff since last year. We've worked with the city staff on what opinion they have as to how we process this use, and it was their opinion that they should proceed as a special use, not as a permitted use. We went to the city plan commission, city council, committees of the council, full council, and a text amendment has been granted that allows this as a special use in the C-3 district. And that is a, one of your standards for granting a special use. We've also been to the city site plan and appearance review committee, and we've received a recommendation for approval from them. We, I, you have in your exhibit, in your handouts, copies of this exhibit. It's just, this is at a measurable scale, one inch equals 100 feet, so if anyone has any questions, I wanted to have it available. Basically, the property is located approximately 400 feet north of Oakton Street. It's on a private drive for providing access to the site and then access to Oakton. There's no access to residential anywhere in the area. The property is a bit unusual in size and shape. On the east side, it's a little under a half acre, about 20,000 square feet. Has 150 feet generally in the north-south dimension, and anywhere from 120 to 150 feet in east-west dimension. The property on the west side of the private drive is less than a quarter acre, and it is approximately 430 feet north-south, but it goes, it, anywhere from zero feet at the north and south end, and then bows out to 35 feet in the middle. The individuals, the property owner and the cooperator are here. I think it's better that they explain the specifics of the... that they explain the specifics of the operations as they plan it, but I'd like to just very briefly go through the standards for special use. As said, standard number one talks about that this is a listed use in the zoning ordinance in this district. As I explained, I believe it was ordinance 46-0-13, was approved by the city council on May 28th. They added definitions for this type of use as a yard waste transfer facility, and then they added it to the I-III district as a special use. The second standard in regard to special uses includes the purpose and policies of the comprehensive plan of the city, as well as the zoning ordinance. Looking at the comprehensive plan as we did, one of the, it states that one of the primary themes of the city's comprehensive plan is the recognition that Evanston must allow growth to occur while enhancing the community's special character. Looking at the map for the city's comprehensive plan, this area is shown as an industrial area for development. Looking at the zoning map, it is an area that is zoned I-III, which is about the most intensive industrial that you have in the city. If you then look at the, it's some of the uses that are already in the area, we have North Shore towing, Ozinga ready mix, it allow, the district allows things like recycling centers, so the character of this location of this proposed special use is consistent with both your comprehensive plan and your zoning ordinance from the standpoint of the I-III district. Standard number three talks about the effect of, that there's no negative effect on the neighborhood, as well as no negative effect on the city as a whole. I think that's important. One of the things for the special use is you normally look for public need and benefit. To have this type of use in your community at this location, you have substantial areas in your city that you're blessed with having this much landscaping. You are going to have the need to recycle or dispose of that landscaping, and this transfer facility provides that opportunity without having any composting on the site. The material will be brought in, will be stored temporarily, there's a 24-hour maximum according to IEPA standards, and then it is transferred off the site and composted elsewhere. As it's recycled, it may be brought back to this site or other sites, and then sold as compost and other landscape material, so that again restores opportunities for the character of your community with as much landscaping and areas that you're benefit from. In regard to property values, if you look at the existing zoning, the I-III district, this use is actually less intense than many of the uses that could go on the site. The owner has owned the property for a number of years, he's looked at I-III uses, but as I explained, the site is an unusual shape, there's another standard about public utilities, there are not public utilities like sewer and water, so it's very difficult to have some of the other uses that are allowed in the I-III district. This is, I think, a win-win situation. It provides benefits in your residential and commercial areas that are being serviced, and it also provides a reasonable use for an I-III property. As I mentioned, the next standard, public facilities, there are not sewer and water facilities, public sewer and water facilities on the site or the surrounding, or budding sites, and the proposal is with this site plan, they will be using porta-potties, portable water tanks, portable facilities, and this use can operate at that level. It doesn't require full sewer and water system. In regard to traffic, if you look at the amount of traffic that is on the Oakton Avenue and Oakton Street and the private drive, there's a number of trucks that are already in the area. This is looking at primarily the smaller landscape contractor trucks. They're expecting anywhere from 25 to as many as 50 customers per day, contractors that come in and dispose of their lawn, yard materials. One or two trucks, or more if needed, but that should be very rare, will be coming in as transfer trucks to collect the yard waste, to make sure that they meet the 24-hour requirement. If they have an exceptionally busy day and it does need a second trip, then they'll do what they have to do to do that. The other standards talk about the preserving significant historical and architectural resources, and also the next standard is preserving significant natural and environmental features. This site, the historical aspect of it, is that it's been used for industrial for numerous years, heavy industrial, not just the site, but also the whole area. There really is not any significant historical or architectural resources that would be, that couldn't be preserved, and the same is true with the natural resources. It's basically the existing conditions, it's a use that can occur based on those uses. And the final regulation talks about special use comply with all other applicable regulations. We've been working with staff, I believe that it will meet all of those standards. In addition, as I said, more than 70% of the time I'm working for the public sector, I have dealt with these types of uses. This does require an Illinois IEPA permit. If there are issues sometimes with zoning and you have some concerns, it is often difficult for staff to get an immediate turnaround on whatever that issue may be. With the IEPA operations permit, if someone doesn't perform, they can pull your permit, and you will have to cease and desist operation until you resolve it immediately. So it really has an opportunity that it's a unique special use, it has public needs and benefits, and it's very easy to regulate. I believe with that, I think it would be important if you hear from the property owner and the operator as to how they anticipate some of this will function.
Unless, if there's any questions?
Before we get into the use really quickly, I just want to make sure I understand, because it seems like a big jumble, like all those properties here, she seemed like a big jumble of the same thing, but we're not talking about, when I first looked at this, I thought we were kind of talking about this whole swath of cars, but we're not talking about that. We're just talking about the, we're talking about the space that's indicated on this plan, correct?
Just in the way with the site plan, yes.
And then I have another plan that points to the little semi, kind of arced area across the street.
Yes, there's a survey for that as well.
Yes, there is a plat of survey for that, but there's not a plan, so that is included though, so somebody can explain to me what's going to happen on that parcel.
I think that's best for the operator to explain.
That's fine, I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. We're talking about everything kind of left of the drive, and then what's on this plan. All right. Okay.
My name's Scott Scholler. I'm the owner of the property, and I've owned the property for approximately 25 years, so I own both parcels. I'm from Contour Landscaping, 3501 Jarvis in Skokie, and as far as what Jim and I are choosing to do with the property, or what we're requesting to do is to have landscapers have a place where they can pick up bulk materials, that could be pulverized topsoil, woodchips, sand, things of that nature. By having a landscape yard transfer station, what the benefit of that is, is that the contractor can come in and empty his truck, whether it's grass, shrub trimmings, or things of that nature, and then what he would do is obviously with an empty truck, he'd be able to buy materials, bulk materials from us. It's a great opportunity, because what would happen is then, you know, with an empty truck, he could, he could buy the materials, obviously sales tax would be involved with those materials, and then as far as the business model is, is when we take the yard landscape waste out of the area to an authorized compost facility, which would be in Antioch or Wakanda area, which is a ways, you know, it would be in a rural area, then we can come back, instead of coming with an empty truck, we can come back with materials that we would have bins, and that would supply the landscapers with materials that they would need. So it's a great opportunity, because then we are not running empty trucks on the highway. We'll be able to take materials out, or yard waste out, and then bring materials in. Jim, did you want to add anything to that?
Hi, my name is Jim Suckelman. I'm the owner of the mulch center. We currently have a yard on 41 in Lake Bluff, a yard in, on Milwaukee Avenue in Deerfield, and we do, this would be a kind of a sister yard, both yards that we have, one of them's 10 acres, one of them's about four acres. We also have a yard in North Chicago that's a manufacturing site where we take raw materials and grind it up and let it, you know, go through its stage and make different mulches out of it. This site is ideal, there's a lot of need down here. We have contractors that come from Skokie, Evanston, Morton Grove, this area, and they drive all the way up to us, and it fills the highways with traffic, it's cost to homeowners, residents more money, because somebody has to pay for their, their time and fuel, and this would be, I think, an ideal location for this type of use.
And just to clarify with staff, the bulk material purchase aspect of it, is that within this new transfer station definition, or is that something that is already allowed in the district?
That is currently a permitted use.
Okay, so that falls under a different definition, that's already allowed, so they would just be combined?
Correct.
Um, could somebody just, do you guys only own these two parcels? Do you, or sorry?
Scott owns this parcel.
Scott, you own these two parcels, but not the other parcels?
No, I own, I own both, both parcels, and then Jim and I are in a 50/50 partnership with J&amp;S LLC.
But you don't, you don't own any of the other parcels that are off of this, in this I-III?
No, just those two.
Okay, and what was the, what's the plan for the parcel on the left, or west-hand side of the street?
The, since it is a private road, I believe it's owned by Ozinga, and we want to be responsible around traffic, we have, you know, we've made it on the plan so that the trucks can come into our yard and they can stage, you know, these are landscapers, we're talking smaller landscapers now, usually, you know, one-ton dumps, they hold approximately five yards of material maybe, and what they'll do is they'd come in, and if we had an overflow, like in the springtime or the fall time, what's great is since I own the land across from where we're going to be doing business, that would be used as a turnout for staging. So by this way, we're keeping trucks during the busy time off the road, so that other contractors, or vendors, or people that go down that road would have access to wherever they're going.
So if I'm cutting to the chase, does that mean that we get rid of all the cars that are over there?
Oh, hopefully, hopefully, let's put it this way, they won't be in front of our place, we'll make sure of that, but.
Okay. At least all the cars that are on your property, okay. I had another question, kind of technical. The plat information that we have, as well as this sort of overview plan that you've provided, appears to indicate that your structure is actually over your property line? Am I understanding that correctly?
Which area are you referring to? Do you want me to step up?
If the, if I've got the plat of survey here, sure, I mean, you can come step up if it's easier to see here, but if I've got the plat of survey, I've got a line upon which it says 148.91, and it's a thick line, and it's parallel to the, it's in, it's in line with the line that also says 220, which, that appears to me to be your property line, unless I'm, unless I'm confusing things.
Yes, that, that is the property line, when.
So the, this entire structure is?
Well, it's not a structure.
Well, it's a concrete wall, so that's a structure to me.
Right, that's where the bins are. And when we originally bought the property from Zera Construction many years ago, he had bought the railroad spur, and that was when Rustoleum used to be there, and part of their railroad spur was right there at that location, so as we.
Do you have an easement for use of this property?
Not at this point.
So how, how is it then that you've drawn up a plan to build over the property line? I mean, how, how do you intend to carry that out?
In working with staff, we were looking at that, as it's been there for such a long period of time that it's a legal non-conforming condition. We're not adding to it, we're not.
You are adding to it, though, you're building more proposed block walls across the property line.
And that does not need to occur, I think that may have just been the way it was drawn. We, we'll make sure it stays within the survey.
We can kind of set it aside for now, but I'm going to flag that for you guys for legal, because I think it sets up, first of all, just not having the easement for the use of the property, but also, which is one thing, but are there any implications that could be derived, even given the 10-foot encroachment or whatever, by, by having a use that is now, you know, in another zoning district, actually, literally, I mean, we're kind of cutting, it could be cutting hairs, but it could be an issue, you know, 20 years from now, that there's this use that encroaches over.
We can have legal address that issue prior to the planning and development committee.
Right, you get where I'm going with that, though.
Question for, for staff, the, the selling of topsoil, storage of topsoil, et cetera, et cetera, that we talked about as being legally permissible in an I-III, is that also permissible in an I-1?
Yes, it would be permissible as either a wholesale goods establishment or a trade contractor, both of which are permitted.
And since that is the portion of the business that is technically going into the I-III portion, would that have any effect on not making an issue of the yard transfer because that being?
Well, they're still doing all their, like.
There's bins for branches, small logs and woodchips.
All the bins for branches and everything are.
That goes over that line.
Over here.
So they've got, that's where they drop off, and then they move it over.
I'm not trying to make it a huge deal at this moment, I'm just saying from.
No, I was just looking at if there's a way that, just to avoid any sort of a, a problem with it.
Speaking of which, while we're asking, while we're on that, what is the difference between where the covered daily yard waste transfer facility bin area is, and the bin for branches, small logs, and woodchips? What's the difference between those two?
The yard waste is typically grass, shrubbery, things of that nature. If we, if we had, let's say, a tree person come in, and if they dropped off wood waste, which would be logs, or woodchips, you know, rough-grade woodchips or things like that, that's handled as a bulk material, that would not be handled as yard waste. In other words, that would be a recyclable item, or something that we would ship out, or, or whatever.
Okay, so is it like a branch of a certain circumference or something that?
Yeah, pretty much so, yeah.
Switches whether it's yard waste versus?
Exactly, yeah, you know how.
Wood, whatever. Wood, whatever.
Grass and leaves and things of that nature. Or when I say shrub trimmings, I'm talking lower, smaller caliber branches per se.
Okay, okay.
So, would it be fair to say, at least in terms of, like, in terms of the usage of your lot, like, the percentage of the lot that you're using for the bulk sale versus the yard waste, your bulk sale is the primary, is the primary use, it certainly, it seems to me, I mean, not all these bins are labeled, but it appears to me that the majority of the area is appropriated to bulk sale and maybe-
I, we haven't done any calculation-
Maybe like 10, 10 to 25% of it maximum is, is, seems to be about the recycling.
The yard waste and the wood waste that would be going out, I think-
Am I gathering that correctly?
We have the, you know, existing structure where we have yard waste in, and we have wood waste, which we would, it would consist of logs and wood chips and things like that. And then there'd be multiple bins of aggregates, soil products, compost, you know, pulverized dirt, and then some different mulches would be, and those are items that are sold that are, are taxed. There is no tax on the incoming materials that come in.
During your busy season, how many trucks do you guys see, anticipate seeing a day, a day, what's your business model set up for?
25 to 50.
During the busy season?
During, during the busy season.
Spring and fall?
Spring, fall, we get a lot of, you know, leaves, and in spring, people are doing spring cleanups and they're wanting to, you know, get their yards cleaned up for the season and mulch and whatnot.
Are you guys going to be open to homeowners, or is it to the trade only?
To the trade only. If a homeowner comes in, and some, some of our other yards will have a homeowner that might own a pickup truck and they, or pull a little trailer with their SUV, but that would be very, very infrequent. 99.9% of our clientele, we are geared to the commercial landscape contractor.
Are you planning on offering delivery?
We, we do deliver, that's a big part of our service. We currently are, at, at some of our other sites, we deliver 60, 70, 80 loads a day. And some of them are big semi-loads that go to, you know, big municipalities.
Right. So in addition to 20 to 50 trucks that are coming in to drop off, you're also sending out 50 to 60 loads a day?
They, they go out of our other yard that we have 10 acres. This would not be-
But I'm, but I'm asking specifically about this one, are you planning on doing deliveries out of this one?
I think if a resident in the immediate area wanted a few yards, we probably, we talked about this, having a, a smaller truck that might hold up to 10 yards, that could do some local deliveries. Most of the deliveries go out of one of our other sites that are to the north.
But what's your plan on, on offering?
Small scale.
But how many deliveries?
I, I think maybe five a day might be, you know, you cut me off guard, but we talked about it, that would not be, we'd have to bring the material in, the bins can only hold so many yards, so where we have thousands of yards at other sites, that, you know, would come probably out of another site, would be more logistically easier for us to regulate than bring it here and then put it on another truck, it just, it would come down. Many of the trucks we have have two, three bins in them, and we open them up, not bins, but they're split, and so we can make multiple loads.
Right, you can drop multiple loads out of one truck.
Correct.
Yeah, due to the size of the location, we're really looking at catering to the small contractor. If, we couldn't handle big trucks that would come in and say, hey, I want this and that, just because of the size of the location. So that would be something that, you know, Jim would probably outsource from one of his other yards to accommodate that type of stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean, my concern isn't, you know, somebody who wants 35 yards of mulch, it's the homeowner who wants five yards of mulch and, or four to, one to four yards of mulch, and you're now servicing 10 of those on a weekend, on a Saturday, and 10 on a Sunday, which brings me to my question about Sunday hours. Do you guys really anticipate having people drop off stuff at 7:00 in the morning?
Well, Jim could answer that probably better than I could. I think what we're doing is we're looking at the aspect of keeping Sunday optional. Obviously, when you ask some of these questions, we don't know what demand's going to be.
Right.
So, and obviously, being, you know, to be successful in business, you want to handle your clients' demands the best you can, but then there are limitations, so.
But I'm sure you guys are aware that there's another company that does exactly what you're proposing to do, that's up on Main, right? I mean, you guys are aware of that, so-
Oh, yes, yes.
Based on that, there should be some understanding of what the market can bear.
We, our, a couple of our yards are open on Sundays, a couple are not, and again, it's, if it's a, something that the contractor is, is in need of and there's a demand, we'll stay open, or with, you know, the permission of the council.
Can I ask you guys a question, or it might be a question for, for staff, but you're aware that a yard waste transfer facility does not allow composting on-site? Do you know why that is?
Well, there, there odor issues, there's, could be runoff issues. You need a big site and you need big setbacks. I don't have a comp, currently don't have a compost site. We, there's a, Thielen has one in Antioch, there's, there's half dozen of them around, there's one over the border in Wisconsin, so that's where the stuff would be taken to, and it generally takes 60 to 90 days to go through the composting process, and then the material is screened, and it, probably all seen it, but it resembles black dirt, and it's full of organics and great for plants and vegetables and, and whatnot. And that product would be brought back and sold to, to our customers.
Is there, for staff, is there any question about the, or concern about the smell of mulch and compost so close to the channel?
The fact that they're not going to be composting on-site, I think, is the critical thing. Historically, the city, when it picked up the leaves, this goes back about 10, 15 years ago, would compost on the south side of Oakton, that led to a number of complaints, but it was the kind of condition Jim was describing, being out there for a few months and being turned over, and that's when the odors would emanate. That's not going to be happening at this site and this business. So this has been pretty well vetted through the public process and a neighborhood meeting as the text amendment made its way through the council, Plan Commission, Council Committee and Council. So there is some comfort level, certainly, with the nature of their operation, that it won't have negative external impacts.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome.
And that yard waste gets picked up every, every, at the end of the day and hauled off? The entire, the entire inventory of what you have, or just what fits in whatever that size truck? Or do you only take as much as will fit in a truck at the end of the day?
Well, it, it'll be put and it's, it's enclosed, so there's a roof over it, there's a bin there, and we figured that it holds a little over 100 yards.
100, approximately 150 yards plus is the ability of what we'd be able to hold. And, you know, so we're talking a 12-foot wide by 34-foot length bin that is covered with 12-foot high blocks.
Right.
This might need some clarification, because I think, my understanding of what they're proposing, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, is the yard waste gets removed on a rotating basis at least once every 24 hours, but the bulk materials that you're selling don't get removed, they stay on-site until you sell them.
Right, that's what I'm asking is, but when those, when that material gets dropped off for you, the, the composting, are you cleaning out that bin every 24, every, at the end of every day, or is there, because you're only able to fill up a certain sized truck, that there's always something left?
Okay, the EPA regulates say if, if we had a load come in at 3:00 today, by 3:00 tomorrow, that has to be taken out. So we, we're allowed to leave that in the bin for 24 hours. We had a load at 7:00 this morning, 7:00 tomorrow morning, that's got to be out. So they, they give us 24 hours, so generally-
That's an EPA guideline.
Those are EPA guidelines. Generally, at the end of the day-
To navigate.
We will clean out, and by the way, the average landscape contractor truck holds about five yards.
Right.
The big truck that hauls it out, depending on the, you know, is it grass or leaves and has been, you know, wet and, and stuff like that, but generally we can get about 60 to 70 yards on a semi. So if we had 150 yards, divided by five is, what, 30 truckloads, that would fill up two semis roughly. And we can get a semi, we own a dozen semis, within a telephone call, within two hours we can have a, so if the bin fills up, it's easily cleaned out.
That's, that's the waste, right? I mean, I just put a point on it.
Yes, it's the waste.
So the compost and the mulch that they're selling on-site will stay on-site for however long it stays there until it's sold?
Yes.
Correct, correct.
Yes, open in bins.
Right.
Yeah, and those are open in bins and-
Yeah, and they don't stink anymore, generally.
No, no, I mean, you know, mulch has a little earthy odor too, but nothing like rotting grass.
They all have their odor, but nothing like rotting grass, yes, yes. We're all familiar with those smells. Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's traffic, can we get back to, why don't we get back to hours? Because you touched on it.
That's Sunday hours? Those Sunday hours?
Well, I mean, they're, they're not remotely close to any houses, Home Depot's open on Sunday.
Yeah, but not at 7:00. They don't open until 8:00.
Where are they going to bug at 7:00?
I don't know.
North Shore Towing is towing all night.
Somebody.
So.
I don't know.
I, I don't know, I'm, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know who they could be bothering.
But the question is, so if a, if a, if a guy, if a, a landscape guy has, is making, is dropping off a load at 7:00 on Sunday, he's picked that up from someplace?
But then he's breaking the ordinance somewhere else probably, because he's making too much noise before.
Right.
Like, we have a noise ordinance for that, though.
He may have.
And how does that get enforced? Gets enforced really well, right?
I mean, if he's going to cut the lawn at 6:00 AM and he's going to cut the lawn at 6:00 AM, whether he's dropping off the yard waste in Lake Forest or here, right?
It just seems like we're enabling. Because if he's picking up sand to do the, the pavers, you know, at 8:00 on a Sunday, do we really want to encourage him to be working on a Sunday when technically it's not allowed in the city of Evanston?
Bless you.
Thank you.
It's allowed in Skokie.
Well, what are, what are-
I don't know, I don't know what the rules are in Skokie.
What are the regulations for, I mean, you can, you can do yard, you can do yard work on Sunday in Evanston, right?
Don't tell my wife that.
I mean, I presume that, I presume that there are really loud machines fall under, like, a noise ordinance at some point in time. But I don't even know when the noise ordinance starts.
If I could just interrupt for a second, if the demand's not there, we're not going to be open Sundays.
No, obviously.
I guess, I guess what we're doing is-
But you're, you're, you're looking at the outset, which means we, we also have to look at the outset, we need to think about what happens five years from now or 10 years from now.
When you're wildly successful. Because we want you to be wildly successful.
So, we have to kind of imagine, let our run, our imaginations run, thank you, Dennis.
If I could, this is such an isolated site, one of the, probably the most isolated site in the city so far from residential, that at least in terms of surrounding property impact, there will not be any, if someone is, you know, entering this private roadway on a Sunday morning. Indeed, that's what our focus, I think, should be.
Do you have any issues with the 6:30 on Monday through Friday?
How about that mobile grinder? When does that thing run? What does that sound like?
That, that would be a tree chipper if there were branches.
My God, that I was trying to figure out.
And, and I would be happy, I, we don't anticipate running that on a Sunday.
You're not running that at 6:30 on Saturday morning?
No, no, I promise.
Because that'll drive somebody nuts.
That could even be 7:00. Clean. All right, I think, well, Matt, do you want to throw out where you, we're trying to make happy numbers here, so Matt, put together some suggestion.
Happy numbers.
That's what I, that's what I call my dimensions. If you dimension anything for me and it's not-
Basically, what we do is when we, we recommend to City Council for an approval, we usually condition it with hours as at least a starting point for them. So would you be able to work within hours of Monday through Friday, 6:30 AM to 6:30 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM? Doesn't mean you have to keep those hours, you just have to operate within them.
I think that'd be fine, I-
Is, I'm sorry, did you say Saturday, was, is there no Sunday hours then?
Saturday and Sunday both, being a 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
I think, I think that would, that would work.
Okay, all right, we'll, yeah, we'll definitely get to everybody, we're just trying to, we're trying to talk stuff through and understand where we're at. Okay, so we've talked, we've talked traffic, we've talked hours, I saw staff was one to four people in the packet, that's consistent still with your understanding of what you would be.
Yeah, during our busier times, we anticipate where we might have up to four people.
Okay.
And there are slower periods. We don't anticipate, you know, we kind of go from April to the end of November, usually after Thanksgiving, people are pretty well done, and, and we, one of the requests, we were looking into possibly selling salt in the winter and being opened when there's a snow event and contractors could come in, we could open up a bin and they could get loaded with salt, so they don't have to drive up to one of our sites 25 miles away to get their salt.
And there was a staff note in terms of conditions about emanation of odors, but was that just for us to discuss that, or is there a thought that there might be some sort of specific potential condition that one could imply?
Based on the testimony, there should not be any odor issues, but if you feel that it's a concern, then that is a possible condition.
I would say, based on my experience of a similar facility, just one street north on Main, there's nothing, there are no odors.
Well, and I, and I think that the 24-hour issue basically-
Right, I mean, if you have odors-
24 hours and no composting should take care of-
If, if you're getting odors, you are probably in violation of one of those other-
Conditions.
Conditions.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking too, but I just wanted to make sure.
If I could just make a comment, being close to the sanitary district where I'm located, sometimes there may be odor, but they might not be from us.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that, for the record, we aren't the go-to guy when it comes to some of that.
Understood.
I think they're uniquely different odors, though. So I think the average could, the average person could tell.
Okay, I think I've run through the questions I have for the moment. So if that's it, then we're going to go to public comment, so thank you very much, and we'll move on.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is David Cole, I represent North Shore Towing. You're all probably familiar with our infamous lot. Our concern, they've been good neighbors, so it, it's nothing of a personal nature. If I'm not speaking loud enough, it's because I've got hearing aids in both seats, and I, I hear myself talking and sometimes it gets a little raucous. In any event, my main concern and, and is one, is rodents. Number two is what they call fly dumping. That means the neighbors and everybody else begin to think it's a dumping grounds for waste. means the neighbors and everybody else begin to think it's a dumping grounds for waste and other materials. I can't object to anything like that, and neither can he, because I don't know. So, I'm not an expert on garbage. But in any event, the way, the way that we see it, we have an easement there. It's a crowded easement now, and we have, in addition to our yard, Ozinga, who's a wonderful neighbor, and that's a concrete place, and it's busy. This is his main season. His season starts in early spring, lasts almost into winter. And that's for concrete, and that takes care of the community. And within the easement, there's always a great flow of traffic. In the presentation here, if they wanna collect and dump their stuff inside their lot and not on the easement, it would, it would help the situation a great deal. And, and I hate to see the, the three people sitting butt to butt arguing who's gonna get through the road, because it's not that wide. It's narrow, as a matter of fact. And during the winter months, we've got a con...
Just, just to clarify, I'm gonna clarify really quick for you, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we're talking about two different easement areas when we were talking about it. I think you're talking about the easement, which is, you guys have an easement to use this private drive, is that...
That is correct.
Right, and the easement that we were talking about is over here on the east side of the property. So there's, there's no over, basically on home, I don't know if it's technically Home Depot's property, but over towards Home Depot...
That was the Rustoleum that he was talking, that's not the concern.
I know, but, but that's, when we were talking about dumping over an easement, over a property line on a potential easement area, that's where we were talking about.
That doesn't concern me.
We were, so we weren't, there's no proposal to dump anything within the road easement, just to clarify for you.
Doesn't bother me at all, except the odor.
Well, that's why I just wanted to clarify for you, cause it sounded like you were concerned about dumping on the roadway easement, and that's not part of the proposal.
They're okay. But these things do happen, it's a course of business, and the, the land is, has been vacant for a couple of years next to us, and I'm glad to see that he's, for business purposes, I'm glad to see that he's, has something for. I'm concerned about the volume of, of traffic and the type of traffic, and if they could do their loading and unloading within their property for the scraps, chips, salt, chip, whatever else they're doing there with the small guy coming in and out, that, to make it harmonious, it would be a simple way of handling it. But if it's, if these trucks and vehicles are on the easement, it's gonna be a mess.
I think...
It will be an absolute mess.
And I think that's what, when we talked earlier, the idea is that people will be within the confines of their space, and if there is overflow traffic, they will pull into that area that's to the west side of the road, on that kind of little arc area that's...
No, the arc area is on the other side.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, but if you were, if, if, if there was a, if you came in and you couldn't get into the lot, you would pull into the arc area and get off of the easement and wait.
There are towers there for high tension lines in that little cul-de-sac, if you wanna call it that.
Right, but they don't cover that entire property?
No, only a segment of it.
So you could pull into, you could pull your truck into that property and sit there and wait?
Maybe. I can't, I can't be specific on it. It just depends on, and I'm not arguing that is, I'm just telling you or citing my opinion about potentially where there liable to be some problems, and we ought to confront them before there are problems. One of our main concerns was the composting, and you can be conflictual on which odor is more offensive, but the composting lasts for a longer period of time inconsistent. And most of the thing, and the number, if you talk about the number of customers and vehicles on that passageway, twenty-four to fifty is, is a lot. It's a big number, because we have people who are using our facilities twenty-four hours a day, and that's a public service, more or less. That's the street, that's the automobiles that come off the street from Evanston, on parking, et cetera. And that's a big part of our business.
What is your traffic volume, sir? What is your traffic volume? How many trucks do you have in and out a day?
It floats, depends on business.
Like fifty, a hundred?
Twenty-five.
Take any number you want, and you're right. Doesn't make any difference. I can't measure it. It's just not measurable.
There's not an average?
No, not really. Maybe...
So, what's a, what's a slow day for you guys? Five cars?
Per day?
Yeah.
Maybe fifty.
Fifty is a slow day. So a busy day...
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, so fifty, so fifty is a slow day, and a busy day is what, like a hundred and fifty?
Could be, no, not a hundred and fifty.
Not a hundred and fifty, a hundred?
I'd hope for that.
Okay. I would too. So fifty to a hundred, is your, is your slow to busy?
That's right.
Okay.
And Ozinga...
Yeah.
They're, they don't work on a timetable either. They're scheduled by weather, and their vehicles are three times the average size of normal, both in length and width.
Right.
So, uh, it, it's a matter of accommodating each other so that we can get through.
Sure.
And when, and when we load for fuel, you've got a big storage sixteen-wheeler rolling in, and you can't do away with that. So, uh, he was our landlord and a good one for us for many years. So, it's harmonious. We're just telling you what we're concerned with. Rodents is a factor when you, when you're doing with composting, and the odor that comes with the territory. And, and I, from my perspective, when I was listening to the dialogue, they were all skirting around what was gonna happen with ours. If it's a normal business, and it deals with wholesale, and it deals with retail, and it does with anything, there's nobody can tell you when it's gonna be a good day and a bad day. It deals with weather, heat, cold, anything. So, uh, we can't, if we know what the problems are, we'll, we'll be of great assistance. We're not here to resist. We wanna make it work for them and for ourselves, but we don't want anything that's gonna lead to an argument at a later point, because that can get bloody. And we don't wanna be like the Hatfields. So anyway, that's, that's a situation where North Shore is concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, can you just address two of the concerns? One is, I see in your plan that you've got a gate. So, confirm for us that there's a gate that closes at closing time, so that there isn't this...
Uh, yes, there's, there's, if you can, on that, um, on the drawing, if you can see the traffic and basically how the traffic would move. Basically, our goal is to get them in, get them out as fast as possible. Uh, then, there's gates, there's two gates, there's an entry gate, there's an exit gate, and those would be closed definitely during off-hours.
So if I show up with my pickup at ten o'clock, I can't get into your facility?
No, no. And if, if there was a flea dumper that this gentleman, you know, talked about, they could dump down at Ozinga or North Shore, or we have a couple other neighbors. Hopefully, we don't have flea dumpsters. We hope to have lights there and eventually maybe put some cameras up there, uh, cause we have had flea dunk, dumping issues in the past.
Yeah, the, the biggest problem is that now that it's vacant, and I don't, nobody is renting it, there's more chance of fly dumping than there is when you're present.
What was the last use on the property?
Pardon me?
What was the last use on the main parcel?
Uh, it was a concrete contractor.
That was concrete contractor, okay.
The other question, the other question I had was, how many customers do you think you can service in your property, within the property line? So how many trucks do you think can actually fit in there at any one time to be serviced?
Well, on, on the draw...
You have one Bobcat, so you can only load one truck at a time, or you got ten of them, so you can load from every direction?
We'll have a larger front-end loader, so we can handle large volumes. Like, in other words, it's not gonna be small half-yard scoops. There'll be three-yard scoops or whatever. Um, but i- if you noticed on that drawing, I figured that, that would be the staging area, which is on the north side there...
Yep.
Is where we would stage them. And then the overflow would go across the street on that boomerang-shaped piece of property.
So you think on the, on the north side, they're stacking up there, so you've got eight in a, eight in a row, and then they come into the yard and get serviced by the one front-end loader, or multiples?
It would be, there'd be two on the site, yeah.
Okay, so you get two guys, get, two trucks getting serviced at any one time, and then there's the line for stack-up?
Correct, and even if we, um, I think we could almost double them up and do two rows of traffic on that north side, because if you notice the design there, there's no bins, there's nothing, you know, we have the office trailer there, but we could actually, you know, stack them up to, it was their, you know, point of entry to be serviced.
Do I, do I pull in and pay, and then you load me up, or how, how's that work if I'm...
Generally, the, yeah, we, we like to get paid. Uh, they pull in, they get other trucks, or the, generally the driver gets out. Uh, we don't like people meandering around. They pay in the trailer, they get a ticket, and they take it, and the loader operator takes one part of it, the other part they keep as a receipt. They get loaded, and they go around and, and leave and go to their job sites.
And if I'm, uh, and if I'm bringing in yard waste, am I paying to drop off the yard waste too?
Yeah, the same scenario, and many of them will drop the yard waste off and need to get loaded. So they'll drop, they'll come in, and the person in the trailer say, so many yards, so much, and, and then they dump it, and if, some may just go out and go back to cutting grass, some may be needing some mulch or some aggregates or soil products.
And will you need to unload them, will you need to unload them if it's yard waste, so that needs to be unloaded, or is that something that they're gonna kind of back up and dump?
Probably ninety-eight percent of them have dump trucks. Those are all those little...
So they would be able to back into this bin and dump themselves?
And dump, and they're in and out.
Okay. All right. Was there anyone, you, good on those questions. Was there anyone else who wished to speak with us, sir? Yeah, we need to grab you up here on the microphone. Not sure, did I swear you in earlier, sir? I'm not sure that I did. Okay. If we could have your name and address, then?
I'm Robert Rodriguez. I'm on the lot right next to them, on the south side.
You go on the lot south of them?
Right.
Okay.
Now also, I got two gates, one to get in, one to get out. Actually, right now, I don't use one of those.
Okay.
I think the road, they really be able to handle the, the traffic, I don't think it's gonna be issuing that.
Okay.
The only, I suggest to be really restricted and no parking on the street, because a lot of people, they're using for parking right now. I don't think it's supposed to park in the street either way, either side. And if he's parking there, there really is gonna be issue on the traffic. But if it's no parking on either side, there should not be any issue about the traffic, because the road is big enough to flood either way.
Okay, great.
The only thing I see, I really don't wanna, you know, block in my exit and my entrance.
Right.
That's the only thing I really concern. I don't think there's gonna be any problem about it.
What do you use your property for, sir?
Uh, I use parking cars right now, because I, I own this mechanical repair shop. So, for the vehicles or trucks, they don't, pick them up on time. My storage over there, and also cars I have sometimes for parts and stuff like that.
Okay.
That's what I got right now.
Great. Any other questions from Mr. Rodriguez? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, on a related note, then, for the applicants, where, I thought I saw somewhere that you would have up to five employees at a time on site. Where will they park for? Where will they park?
We, we would have, any employee parking would be on our property. So, in other words, it would either be inside on that east side, or if we use the area to the west, but there would be no parking on that road. That road's only thirty feet wide, and you've got Ozinga and ourselves and North Shore Towing using it. And right now, there's parking all over the place. So, by us actively using this yard, we would not permit any unauthorized parking, at least in front of our property line. It's gonna affect our customers.
So what I'm hearing is a condition of removal of the existing car storage on the adjacent property that's a part of this proposal, and a requirement for all loading, offloading, stacking, and parking to take place upon, to take place within these two properties? Okay. Uh, just for the record, was there anyone else from the public who wished to speak with us? None? Okay. Since this is a new special use, um, that we haven't gone, that we haven't gone through before, is there, are there any aspects that staff thinks that we haven't covered at this point, you know, similar to like we cover the hours and, you know, those sorts of the garbage pickup for other types of special uses? Like, are there any, is there anything that we've not understood from this discussion at this point that you may have knowledge, you know, that you may have covered in some of the previous discussion?
Any potential conditions that would be sort of out of the norm are incidentally covered through the Illinois EPA permit, so they should be non-factors.
I know for staff, one of the concerns that I saw expressed by neighbors repeatedly was that this was the opening to a greater waste station transfer thing. I am assuming that all of that has been worked out, and that by approving this as a yard waste transfer station, we have addressed all of that?
I believe we have. It's restricted to yard waste transfer only. And the neighborhood meeting that occurred, that the applicant attended with two ward aldermen in the immediate area was well-attended by residents, and I think that worked the issues out.
Okay, thanks.
I'm just gonna clarify further record, just because I think there was just a mistake early on in the presentation. This is not the C-three district, this is I-three district.
That is correct.
Right, okay. Okay, is there anything further from the applicant? Anything else that you wanna say? Good, okay. Um, any other questions from the board? Anything that we haven't covered yet? All right, with that, then, we've...
Sorry, just, how are we dealing with that spot that's over the property line?
We are recommending to council that they confer with their, with, we are recommending to the city council that they confer with council about the need for an easement and the potential impact of that on, you know, on the adjoining property and how that variance works. I think, I don't know that that's something we're gonna solve, and I don't know that that's gonna change our recommendation substantially, so much as it's something they should look at. Okay, then, if there's nothing else, we'll close the record and begin our deliberations. And is there any discussion? Did you have anything before we do that?
No, I mean, I was just gonna say, I think, based on the Q and A and sort of discussion on the record, that it seems like with the conditions on hours and parking that we propose to put in place, that we can, uh, that the standards for a special use for this purpose are probably met, and it's probably a good use of the property. I'd also suggest, though, as another condition, that we recommend that the special use be granted only conditional upon receiving the EPA permit. granted only conditional upon receiving the EPA permit that's, that's also required, so that we don't grant an open use for the property without having a permit to use it.
Just one thing to note, building permits cannot be pulled for anything unless the special use permit is granted, so that could affect the timeframe along with the EPA license.
I, I think we could address your concern by making it state that it must be on file with the city within three months...
Yeah, that would do it.
Or something like that of the beginning of operation.
Then with that and consideration of the conditions that we, we have discussed, most particularly being with, with relationship to the loading, offloading, stacking, and parking, we will review those standards for special use. And starting with standard number one, the requested special use is in, is on the list of special uses listed in the zoning ordinance, and as we have clarified, this property is within the I3 district, and there has been a recent text amendment to allow for this type of special use within that district. Standard number two, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. The proposed use, as I've just stated, actually had a text amendment to clarify this type of use. It is being proposed within a district in which it has been defined to be allowed, and it is also wholly surrounded by commercial and industrial uses, and therefore seems to be consistent and compatible. And therefore, I believe this standard has been met. Standard number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. The potential negative, the potential cumulative, negative effects of this type of business certainly are with respect to traffic, noise, et cetera, but this location is on a main road in and out of Evanston. It is well-separated from potential residential areas that it could impact, and is in fact adjacent to an existing Home Depot, which could be very much considered a compatible use because the people going to this facility, 25% of the time at least, could easily be going to the spot next door. So it's actually quite compatible in terms of, you know, location and traffic, potential traffic throughout the city. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, this is surrounded by commercial and industrial slash, you know, retail uses, and if anything, it appears as though it will be cleaning up a couple of properties that have been, have been used for, for various storage uses of vehicles, et cetera, over the years, and if anything, may, may sort of improve the use, be an improved use of those properties. So I believe that it will not diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood and be a positive impact. So I believe that standard has been met. Standard number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. There's very minimal impact to public facilities and services, as has been stated as a part of this proposal. In fact, even the drive to this location is, is a private drive and leading out to Oakton, which is, is set up to handle a greater amount of traffic. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Standard number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. We've had a considerable amount of discussion about that, and although the private drive that has an easement through this, through these properties for access is not entirely within our purview, we have suggested a condition with respect to the containment of the vehicles with, related to this use, within, within the two properties that are a part of the use, and I believe that satisfies any concerns with respect to traffic for this property. So I believe this standard has been met. Standard number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This, I can't even, I can't even make this apply in any way whatsoever. There's virtually no structure on the property, and certainly not of historical or architectural concern. Standard number eight, the requested special use preserves natural, significant natural and environmental features, although this is along the green space at the canal. It is a fully, we understand it to be a fully paved lot, and therefore, the continued use of it as a fully paved space should not impact significant natural and environmental features on the property or in the immediate vicinity. Standard number nine, the requested special use complies with all applicable regulations of the district in which it's located and other applicable ordinances, and with that, with the assumption that in order to run this business, they have gotten their EPA permit, and also with the understanding that any legal issues with respect to the property line have been resolved, then therefore, this standard would also be met as well. So is, with that, we've run through the standards. Is there any other discussion, or do we have a motion?
I just have a quick point, question of clarification.
Sure.
How, how do we want to word this EPA status thing so that we do not infringe upon their ability to move forward?
Well, I think you said something about it being on record with the city within a certain number of months of operation, and if they're operating, then they have to have received it. So that makes sense.
Right. Is that, is that fine with everyone, and does that make sense?
I would just condition the special use that we're granting on the operator having all applicable licenses to operate a business of this nature.
I think what Melissa was trying to say, though, is that in order for them to make the modifications to the property so that they can open up, they need to get a building permit. In order for them to do that, they have to have, like, they would have to meet all the conditions of the special use. So instead of trying, instead of getting their EPA permit at the same time as they're working on the property so that they can open, they would have to wait to get their EPA permit and then work on the property so that they could open. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just thinking they'd be able to build on the property but not use it.
But I think Melissa said they can't build on the property unless they meet the conditions of the special use, which would, in this particular, in the way we're talking here, if the EPA was acquired for that, then they wouldn't be able to build on the property until they had the EPA thing.
I think if I heard you correctly, your original concern was that there not be a special use granted, and then it'd be hanging out there without anything being done in terms of the EPA, and it just kind of continuing on...
Right.
...with nothing really happening on this, and then somebody comes in a year from now and says, "Hey, I want to do this," and getting the special use, but...
We could have this special use lapse...
I mean, that's, that's what I was...
Without, if there's a certain amount of time that an EPA permit does not exist for the property, a special use could be conditioned to lapse, correct? Like if it went...
I think if, rather than getting into all the specifics of this, certainly your general condition that there should be an EPA permit in order for them to be able to operate, and we'll let the law department work out the exact language as part of the ordinance that will be in front of P and D, if that's okay?
That meets my concern.
Okay.
Okay.
With that being said, in the matter of 13ZMJV0051 regarding 2533 and 2532, are those the correct addresses, that they're both on the same side of the street, and one is even and one is odd?
No, they're on opposite sides of a private drive. Oh, they're on the same sides of Oakton Street. That's a very good question.
Those are the addresses listed on the plan of survey.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was talking the right properties. On those two properties, that we recommend to city council approval of a yard waste transfer station with the following conditions being in place. That the hours of operation be between 6:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7 a.m. and 5 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday, with the condition that loading, offloading, staging, stacking of materials, and parking occur all within the confines of the two properties, making attention not to block any portion of the drive. That the law department and council have a discussion about the easement that we've raised concerns about in the southeast corner of the property, particularly the fact that there is no documented easement, and also the fact that it is in two zoning districts, and making sure that that does not create any problems. And the last condition being that all documents required by the EPA and the I EPA be worked out with the special use to make sure that those are on file with the city, pending legal's recommendation on the best way to do that.
You got it.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made, and second all those in favor of the recommendation to city council. Please say it.
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion is carried, so good luck. Anything else, Melissa?
Just to note, the next zoning, the next regular zoning board of appeals meeting is July 2nd, and the week after on Wednesday, July 10th, is the special joint meeting with the plan commission and zoning board of appeals that will be at 7 p.m.
Okay. And with that, since Dennis showed up, we get to congratulate him and thank him for his service to the city, since he will no longer be with us, and so thank you very much, and with that, we will adjourn.